It's a lot nicer.
Yeah, I think you did.
Frank?
Why are we... Hey.
Welcome to the April 6th meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please. Councilmembers Draymond?
Here.
Friedman?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
Mayor Quintero?
Here.
The flag salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Weaver and the invocation by City Clerk Artie Karsakian.
Please join with me in our flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Woodrow Wilson, when still governor of New Jersey and campaigning for the presidency in 1912, spoke the following words to a capacity crowd in New York's Madison Square Garden. "There is no cause half so sacred as the cause of the people. There is no idea so uplifting as the idea of the service of humanity." Let us use these words as a guide for our prayer this evening as we assemble to carry forth with the business of our city and select a new mayor who will lead this body in assembly for the coming year. We pray that we are always mindful of the sacred cause of representing our stakeholders and rededicate ourselves tonight by word and deed to the task of uplifting ourselves and our neighbors in the service of all humanity. We remain true believers in the nobility and importance of public service, but should we forget this, guide us onto the path of dedicated selfless devotion to these principles of our democracy this evening and always. Amen.
Mr. Clerk, may we have your report?
The agenda for the April 6th, 2010, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, April 1, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Home.
Next?
Um, next is a selection of new mayor.
All right, and before we go to that, let me thank the council members and the staff and all of the employees of the city of Glendale for an excellent, excellent year. I think we all worked very hard this year. We did a very good job of bringing the issues that are important to the city to the forefront, solved lots of problems, and are working on others. So I'm very pleased at the kind of year that we had, and so I'm prepared to step aside and have someone else, as I mentioned, to the Glendale news press. One year is enough.
Okay. Thank you. The business before the council is the selection of a mayor. I will now entertain nominations for that office.
I would like to make a little statement, if my colleagues will indulge me, which is that I am very proud of the work that this council has done in the last year. We've certainly had our disagreements, but it's never been personal. It's never led to grudges between council members, and I believe that at the end of the day, those disagreements have led to better policymaking and better policy for the people of Glendale. I know that there are people that think that I might be mayor this year, and while that would be an incredible honor, and I believe that I'm capable of that, I have two more years left on my term. Mr. Najarian has expressed to me that he would like to be mayor this year, and I know that he's... I'm sorry? Somebody say... Oh, okay. I know that he's very capable, and we work very well together, and I believe that it's truly in the best interest of the city if this council is united in whoever's mayor for the next term. And so for that reason, I would like to nominate Mr. Najarian and to ask my colleagues to all support his... him as mayor.
Okay.
Are there any further nominations for the office of mayor? Hearing no further nominations, we will proceed with a roll call, and it will be in alphabetical order. Councilmember Draymond?
Absolutely, yes.
For the nomination of Councilmember Najarian, or the nomination before us. Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Najarian?
Yes.
Councilmember Quintero?
Yes.
Councilmember Weaver?
You didn't have to ask for that, Laura. Yes.
I now declare Councilmember Najarian the duly-elected mayor of the city of Glendale.
Short speech. That's supposed to...
He can talk as much as he wants.
I know he can, but I couldn't.
Thank you very much. I am very honored, and before I get into some of the things, I had a few thoughts written down. It's not a long speech. Applause, applause. I do want to honor former mayor... well, once a mayor, always a mayor. Let's call him Mayor Frank Quintero for his... from what I saw, sitting a few feet away from him, as a excellent year as mayor. We had many challenges this past year. Some man-made, some God-made, some just happened. We don't know who made them. We had the devastating station fires that almost burned our homes and our residents. We missed that. After the fire, which lasted, well, it was several weeks and months, I believe, until it actually went out, we had the rains that came, and at each one of those instances, Mayor Quintero was at the lead. Cool, calm, and collected. You know this guy was a Marine, and I would take him as my point man. Is that what they call him, Frank?
No, thanks.
That's the wrong thing to say.
I'll put you on the point.
In any mission that we had. You led us through restructuring, which was not easy to do nor simple. It's still a little confusing. I don't think I could name the departments that we have. And our financial situation, a daunting challenge, not just for Glendale, but for the state and the nation. And Frank, you always said, even before you were mayor, that the sun is going to come up over the hills of Glendale, that we are going to work together as a council to solve these problems. We're going to work with staff and the community, and by golly, Frank, that's where you led us. So I'm very extremely proud of your last year, leading us as mayor, and I'd like to present you this plaque honoring your year as mayor from April 2009 to April 2010.
Now, if you don't mind, I've got a 45-minute speech that I wanted to... Just kidding. No, I appreciate it very much. It has been an excellent year, and we're going to have an even better year '10, '11.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so just a few comments. As I said, it's not a big, long speech. I first want to thank the support that I have always from my family. My wife Darlene couldn't be here today. She is reviving her career as a bank examiner. She's working for the Federal Reserve. But I do have my two young boys, Alexander and Christopher. Always willing to give me her motherly advice is my mom, Mary, and my dad, Vartkas. So thank you very much, Mom and Dad. The decorated member of our family is my brother Rafi, the Colonel in the Air Force Reserve, and thank you for coming, Rafi. I appreciate it. So the last time I was up here, I had this brilliant idea to go and snip a few olive branches and pass them around to the council. That didn't work so well. Fortunately, we don't need olive branches for this council. And remember with the olive... I cut the olive branch, and then a few months later, there was the whole deal with the collards and their tree trimming, and that was a jinx, I think. So I'm not getting anywhere near any branches and cutting anything like that. It's an honor to be up here, to work with these four individuals, and I've said enough about Frank Quintero. I think he did a very excellent job. Again, Frank, thank you. I enjoy the sage advice of Dave Weaver. Dave gives us advice on technical issues. He's really the technical expert up here on the council, and he, being a lifelong Glendale resident, he always reminds us where we have come from as a city of Glendale, and where we're going, and how fast we're getting there, and it certainly helps putting everything we do into perspective. So, Dave, I appreciate you very much on the council and your efforts this past year, and hopefully in the year to come.
And I hope you watch the videotape of what you just said. I do hear that I'm a good technical man, all that. I'm going to hold you to that.
I hold you to that, of course.
It's like the olive branch. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave. It's my pleasure. John Draymond, it's a pleasure to work with John Draymond, who is a man of vision and tireless community service. Years and years before, he decided to run for city council, he was involved as a schoolboy, running, I believe he was the class president of CV, and helping restore the hillsides after the last great fire that we had 25 or 30 years ago. John is bringing great energy to the council. The Trader Joe's that's coming in to Montrose is largely, in part, to John's efforts in pushing it through and getting them interested in coming to Montrose. He was a driving force, and still is a driving force, to bringing our first museum in Glendale, the Museum of Neon Art. We're very proud of that, and encouraging us to develop the downtown entertainment district as well as the arts council. And he's, as he said today, we need to merge the land use, shopping, real estate development, and the arts into Glendale. That's something we're learning to do, and John, with your advice and your guidance and your direction, I look forward to helping make those dreams become a reality. Thank you very much, John. And Laura Friedman, what can I say about this fine lady? Out of the gate, she has shown us... out of the gate of a very successful campaign where she got a huge number of votes, clearly widely supported throughout the community, and she came out of the gate like gangbusters. I don't think anyone on this council goes to as many events or has as many meetings and outreach sessions than Laura does. Clearly, she puts me to shame, and she also encourages me to, you know, get off my duff and make that extra meeting and meet with that extra constituent. She has... her enthusiasm is infectious, and the whole deal about the bikes, Laura, as you talk about the bikes, you get me excited about the bikes, and I'm with you on all your efforts towards sustainable transportation as well as sustainability for our buildings and our energy use and our entire way we live in Glendale. And I very much appreciate that perspective, and I think my colleagues do as well. And I appreciate your kind words and your nomination today. You are a true lady and a true leader on this council. We have many things going on facing us. We're not out of the economic recession, although I think we've hit bottom. The good news is there's only one place to go from the bottom, and that's up. The challenges are ripe for us to tackle. We will tackle those challenges. The sun will continue to rise over Glendale. We'll continue to manage our budget in a fiscally responsible manner. We're going to continue looking for savings and efficiencies throughout our organization. We're going to continue, at the same time, to bring the services to the Glendale residents that they expect and that they deserve from their city government. We are going to be making strides in the transportation front. I still am a member of the MTA. I'm still chairman for another month or so, and then I'll fall back to regular director. We hope to bring some transportation money continually to the city, and we have a vote coming up next week or the week after, which will lock in quite a nice sum for the city of Glendale. It's a great city. We've got some great projects that we're going to be starting and completing. We're going to have the flyover that's going to be done shortly. I know the residents of Pellicone will be glad to have that finished. We're going to be breaking ground for a swimming pool. We're going to be cutting ribbons to new parks and new developments in the downtown area. Glendale is a great city. Ladies and gentlemen, you have a great group of council people here to listen to your needs and to lead you, and I'm very proud for this year to be the mayor and to chair these meetings. And with that, I thank again my colleagues for their votes of support. Thank you.
What's next on the agenda, Mr. Karsakian?
At 3:00, under Presentation and Appointments, at 3:00 is Agenda Preview for the meetings of April 13, 2010.
Thank you. Mr. McFaul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations to you on your unanimous appointment. For next week, first week under your... the following week, under your new leadership, April 13th, we'll start with the Housing Authority at 2:30, and we'll be having the selection of the new chair and the vice chair at that meeting. There will also be one item on the business agenda, that's the Director of Community Redevelopment and Housing with a Professional Services Agreement Change Order with Kane, Ballmer, and Berkman. That will be followed with the Redevelopment Agency. This will also include the selection of the chair and vice chair, and there's two items on the business agenda. First is the Director of Community Redevelopment Housing regarding Professional Services Agreement Change Orders in Connection with various different projects. And then next, there will be a public hearing. This will be the Director of Community Redevelopment and Housing, once again, parking exception for 23 spaces for property located at 325 North Brand. This will be followed with a joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency with two items. First, the directors of both the Public Works and Community Redevelopment Housing Departments regarding wayfinding and parking signs for downtown Glendale with a motion to request direction from the agency and the city council. Next, the Director of Community Services and Parks will be presenting a report on the Griffith Manor Park renovation project. That evening at 6 o'clock will be the normally scheduled city council meeting, and there are a number of items on the business agenda. The first is the city manager will be presenting a report on the Local Taxpayer Public Safety and Transportation Protection Act of 2010. Next, the Director of Community Services and Parks will be submitting a report on the bidding results for the construction of the Maple Park Revitalization Project. Following that would be the General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, who will be providing a report on a... to provide funding for the Smart Grid Project Management and Development associated with the strategic smart grid roadmap. Next, the Director of Public Works will be submitting a status report on waste conversion technology. Following this will be two public hearings. The first is the city attorney and the director of public works regarding proposed fees for the community planning division and the public works department engineering division for services associated with wireless department engineering division and services associated with wireless telecommunications facilities. That was actually all written on the agenda. And then next, and last, a hearing on the Director of Community Planning regarding an appeal, the Design Review Board Case Number 1, PDR 2009-81, located at 327 and 331 Salem Street. That will be it.
That's quite an agenda.
This is a... this will be quite an agenda next week.
The former mayor asked that we hold this over. Okay. Thank you very much. The next item, please.
Next item is proclamation designating April 2010 as annual commemorative month.
Thank you. And do we have anyone coming forward for this? Mr. Drakgen? Again, Allen? Frank? How do we get down there now? Oh, we can go through here. Okay. Frank, why don't you...
There's steps here. Over here. There's steps down here.
And I'm asking Mr. Quintero to do the presentation because he and I are co-chairs of the annual commemorative event. This is our... is this... this is our 10th anniversary? Next year is 10th. This is our 9th anniversary, and this presentation goes to several of the organizations that are working so hard to make this year's events a success. Right, before I actually read the proclamation, let me thank the committee for all the work that they're doing, and the staffs, Zazet Mullins and others, who are actively involved. As a matter of fact, I guess we have a meeting Thursday afternoon, next Thursday, and anyway, they're doing a tremendous job. The proclamation reads as follows. "The city of Glendale believes a cultural diversity is achieved when our entire community acknowledges that its wholeness is based on the unique strengths of each community member. Today, we can no longer innocently harbor feelings of superiority and separatism in our society. The Armenian community has participated in and greatly enriched our city through contributions in business, arts, culture, education, and government. Many in our community who are of Armenian descent lost a significant number of family members belonging and heritage in the genocide. The hurt is deep, and we look forward to a time when the tragedy will be universally acknowledged. We appreciate the efforts of the community volunteers in organizing the Week of Remembrance to commemorate and recognize April 23rd as the annual commemoration event." That would be Friday night, April 23rd, "and urge our representatives and elected officials in Washington, DC, to do the same. We appreciate the efforts of the Glendale Unified School District, the Glendale Community College, in educating our youth regarding the Armenian genocide. We encourage these and other lending institutions to actively participate in the annual events of commemoration and remembrance, and to increase our efforts to educate our community, not only about the Armenian genocide, but all of man's inhumanity to man." The words of the famous Spanish philosopher Jorge Santayana, "Those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat it." Therefore, I, Frank Quintero, former mayor of the city of Glendale, proclaim the month of April as annual commemoration month, and invite all members of the community to participate in the activities and events of the Week of Remembrance. And that would start April 23rd, Friday evening, at the Glendale Alex Theater. Would you like to say a few words and address the city and the council?
On behalf of the committee, thank you, to the council. Never fail us. Every year you come up with this proclamation. Just briefly tell you that this proclamation is a manifestation of a historical truth, and hopefully that manifestation will provide or be the devil or the torch to avoid future genocides around the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
On behalf of the Armenian Rights Council of America, again, we thank the city for its leadership in this effort, and I think events like this make all of us better human beings and citizens, and look forward to helping each other. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I also wanted to thank Zazet and the city staff that work tirelessly every year for putting together this event. I think that the committee does a great job every year, but, you know, the staff is who... the individuals that pull the whole event and the week together. So I wanted to thank the Fiklis Zazet because she heads it, and Mayor Najarian and Councilmember Frank Quintero for this year as well.
Ms. Mullins?
Definitely don't deserve this. Congratulations, Mayor Najarian, and council members. This is our ninth year, and we have put on great events every year, and I'd like to just announce the events are coming up, and that's starting with a blood drive on Sunday, April 18th, and it's going to be held at the Glendale Youth Center at 211 West Chestnut in Glendale from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. So for those that would be interested to donate blood, we definitely need it in the community. The events will start from the 19th of April, which is Monday, with Man's in Humanity to Man events. Our first night will have an evening of music and poetry. It starts at 6:30 PM with a reception, and the actual program will start at 7 till 9 PM. On Thursday, the 22nd, we'll have an evening of discussions about modern-day slavery, which is a new topic that we actually bring in for the first time. These events have been put together by the Arts and Culture Commission, so we're really excited to have him participate for the second year to bring the discussions on the new topic that we haven't addressed before. Our final event will be the Armenian genocide. It will be held this year on April 23rd, which is on a Friday evening at the Alex Theater. The program will start at 7 PM. We have a keynote speaker, Robert Pavazian. He's an Emmy Award-winning producer, very intelligent man in the Armenian genocide area. He's got an uncle that actually is a survivor of the genocide, so we're very excited to have him come and speak at the event. The event itself, the program, will have Armenian dramatic arts, three skits that would talk about the genocide and walk us through the different stages of the genocide. We have performance by the Glendale Philharmonic, which is our first time to perform at the genocide, so it's going to be a really exciting evening. Other entertainment, we have a candlelight vigil at the end of the closing of the ceremony, so tickets will be available at the Alex Theater the week of the 19th. It will be available on Monday, so I encourage people to get ready and to visit the Alex Theater and pick them up from their box office. So we look forward to see everyone attend all these events. It's going to be a really exciting week full of information.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item is a proclamation commending CB Richard Ellis Investors and CB Richard Ellis Asset Services for achieving LEED Gold Certification from the U.S. Green Building Council, L.A. Chapter.
Thank you. Councilmember Friedman, would you present that? Is there someone from CB?
Ming Lee.
This is Mr. Ming Lee, correct?
Yes.
Principal at CB Richard Ellis Investors.
Oh, I am so glad to be presenting you with this today. It's a proclamation from the mayor, from the former mayor, which reads, "Whereas the city of Glendale is committed to establishing citywide green building standards which are positive forces for economic vitality, social equity, and environmental stewardship, and whereas the city of Glendale is dedicated to the environmental health and safety of its employees, residents, and businesses, and to efficient and productive work environment, and whereas CB Richard Ellis Investors and CB Richard Ellis Asset Services have the same commitment to the environment, their commercial building tenants, and to the city of Glendale, and whereas CB Richard Ellis Investors demonstrated its commitment to sustainable commercial buildings by retrofitting 500 North Brand and achieving LEED Gold Certification from the U.S. Green Building Council for existing buildings, operations, and maintenance, and whereas 500 North Brand has documented water savings in excess of 2.1 million gallons of water annually in the restroom fixtures and an additional 55% reduction in irrigation water usage compared to typical systems, and whereas the property's EPA energy score is 92, placing it in the top 10% nationally for similar buildings. Now, therefore, I, Frank Quintero, mayor of the city of Glendale, to hereby recognize CB Richard Ellis Investors and 500 North Brand as being environmental leaders and setting a positive example for sustainable commercial property in the city of Glendale. Thank you very much for your commitment."
Mr. Lee?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Former Mayor, and all members of city council. Again, my name is Ming Lee, principal on the team that owns...
Again, my name is Ming Lee, principal on the team that owns 500 North Brand. On behalf of CB Richard Ellis, I want to thank the city of Glendale for recognizing 500 North Brand and its achievement of Gold LEED Operations and Maintenance Certification for existing buildings. We are honored to receive this commendation and will share it with all of our tenants. At CB Richard Ellis, we believe that we have a responsibility to our employees, our clients and tenants, the communities in which we own or manage buildings, and the environment. We also believe that LEED certification is an investment in one that makes good business sense. I would like to also say a special thank you to Glendale Water and Power, who assigned a business account representative, Shant Odanian, who worked with the CB Richard Ellis LEED team every step of the way. It was an excellent working partnership between the building and the city. We could not have done this as efficiently and cost-effectively as we did without Water and Power's help. Finally, I want to invite city council or any member of city of Glendale staff to come and tour our building. We would be honored to show you what we have accomplished with your assistance. Again, thank you for this honor. Thank you very much.
For those that say you can't retrofit and meet gold standards, here's an example. Congratulations. The next item, please.
Next item at 3D is a proclamation designating April 2010 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and designating April 21, 2010 as Denim Day in Glendale.
Thank you. And I will read the proclamation. Who's coming forward to receive it? The chairperson of the commission, the status of women, and the co-chair? It goes as follows. "Whereas the United States government has declared April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and the Glendale Commission on the Status of Women, in collaboration with Peace Over Violence, has declared April 21st, 2010 as Denim Day in Los Angeles County, and whereas every two minutes, someone in America is sexually assaulted. Approximately 1 in 6 women are raped during their lifetime, and youths under 18 years of age account for approximately 44% of all reported rapes. And whereas with proper education, there is compelling evidence that we can successfully reduce the incidence of this physically and psychologically damaging crime, and whereas both Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Denim Day are intended to draw attention to the fact that rape and sexual assault are serious issues in our society. And whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Denim Day were instituted to call attention to misconceptions and misinformation about rape and sexual assault, and the problem that many in society remain disturbingly uninformed with respect to issues of assault and forcible rape, allowing these crimes to persist and victim survivors to be revictimized. And whereas the members of the Glendale City Council strongly support the efforts of the City of Glendale Commission on the Status of Women, in collaboration with Peace Over Violence, to educate people in our community about the true impact of rape and sexual assault and what can be done to prevent it, now therefore Frank Quintero, mayor of the city of Glendale, hereby proclaims the month of April 2010 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and designates April 21st, 2010 as Denim Day in Glendale, and urge everyone to wear jeans on April 21st to spread the message that there is no excuse and never an invitation to rape."
Thank you. I'm Paula Devine, Chair of the Commission on the Status of Women, and this is Lynda Pillsbury, our co-chair. On behalf of the commission and the Peace Over Violence, we thank you for this proclamation. Mayor Najarian, congratulations, the city council and staff. Despite the persistent prevalence of violence against women, the city of Glendale continues to rank at the top of the safest cities list. However, despite the focused effort, there is much concern regarding persistence and escalating problem of violence against women. The commission feels it is important to raise awareness of these types of crimes, domestic violence, stalking, rape, and worse. We want to empower women in Glendale with knowledge and basic skills to prevent and survive sexual assault. We're honored to be partnering on April 29th with the YWCA for our annual Take Back the Night March. It will begin at the Y on Lexington at 5:30. We'll have a forum there consisting of representatives from the Glendale Police Department, Peace Over Violence, and the YWCA to speak about prevention. Then we will march to City Hall, and in the Perkins Plaza, we will present a self-defense class. Then we'll march back to the Y, and the Clothesline Project will be there, in which survivors of violence, sexual assault, and domestic violence have decorated clothing. And it's very emotional, and then there will be a reception. That's on April 29th from 5:30 to 7:30. On April 21st, as the mayor has mentioned, we are celebrating Denim Day. We encourage everyone, men, women, to wear jeans and denim on that day. And as was stated, there is no way that we invite sexual assault by what we wear. There is no excuse for abuse. We will also be presenting a series of self-defense classes. And we just learned today that Carol Lou, Senator Carol Lou's office is going to be partnering with us for these self-defense classes. They're going to be held at the police conference room from 6 o'clock until 8:30. The first one is next Tuesday, so unfortunately, none of you can be there, but we hope that the community will be there on April 13th. And then the second one is on April 21st, so Wednesday, and then on April 29th. So we hope that we get a lot of women and young girls to these classes. And finally, with the increasing abductions, assaults, and deaths of young girls and women, and with the pending early release of prisoners in California to be released into our communities, we feel that we want to encourage women to become empowered. I want to mention that the self-defense classes are courtesy of, and some of you might know this company, it's Vision Communications. It's a women's owned, women-owned and operated company out of Long Beach that provides and supplies our wireless systems here in Glendale. And they are providing the self-defense classes. Major goal of the commission, to create awareness and to prevent sexual assault. We hope that women of all ages will take advantage of these programs that we are offering this month in April, so we can all become aware and be prepared. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I'd like to adjourn the memory and, adjourn the council in the memory of John Occasionally, I read the obituary page. Don't ask me why, but I read the obituary page. And there was two on there today. One was Butler served for decades in the White House, just passed away. The other gentleman was John Lawton. I'd like to read a little of his bio. During World War II, as a lieutenant, he led the first U.S. troops in the battle and into victory in Tunisia. After that, he helped plan the invasion of Sicily, and the year after that, he mapped out a military exercise that was a rehearsal for the invasion of Normandy. For his heroism during D-Day invasion, he was awarded the Silver Star. He'd already received the Bronze Star for his action in Algeria. When he, let's see, he was involved in some 20 battles during the Second World War. He came back. One of the things he did here in '63, he joined the Metropolitan Water District as legal counsel and retired as the general manager in 1977. He later, at the MWD, championed the water reuse study of 97, oh, 77, that laid out the groundwork for the MWD's current water recycling program. Now, the reason I'm asking to adjourn his memory, when he was 14 years old, he moved to Glendale with his family. His father opened, and maybe you'll know, John Lawton's coffee shop, which was a local fixture for decades. And after getting his bachelor's degree at UCLA and a law degree at Berkeley, he came back and was an assistant city attorney in Glendale for 13 years. So he's part of the Glendale family. So I think it's, then he moved on to Fresno and then to MWD. So I think we ought to adjourn in his memory. Is that okay, Mr. Howard?
Thank you. We're going to move on to the council comments section of the meeting. Mr. Drayman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add to Mr. Weaver's comments about Mr. Lawton, because there's another Glendale part of that story as well. And that is a second generation, his daughter Sandy Collier, who was for many years a teacher at your alma mater, Mr. Weaver, Glen Oaks Elementary School. And Sandy retired the other year. So while we're adjourning in his memory, our condolences also go to his family. And he passed away at the age of 96 peacefully in his sleep. The other thing I'd like to talk about, Mr. Mayor, is our Students in Government Day last Wednesday. A little program that I was very pleased in my term as mayor to bring back to the city of Glendale with the help of the Glendale Unified School District was Students in Government Day, where the student government, students from the five high schools throughout the city of Glendale had the opportunity to come to City Hall, to meet every department chair in this city, to have a roundtable, a forum with them, ask them questions, learn what they do, meet with council members. Councilmember Friedman was present with me that day. The rest of the council was busy on other, on other issues that had to be taken care of. And then they get the opportunity to be a part of a mock council meeting because of the...
Not to be confused with our council meeting.
Yeah. But because of the, the work going on in our council chambers, the remodeling going on there, and the difficulty in the logistics of getting back and forth, we had to forego that this particular time. But it's a wonderful opportunity for those kids. They are very bright, and their questions are remarkable. They show remarkable insight and a great deal of interest in how local government works. And I think that bodes well for the future of our city, and it speaks very highly of what our high schools are doing here in the city of Glendale. So just wanted to mention that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Drayman. Mr. Weaver.
Yes, Mr. Drayman, that reminded me, the reason I was not there is because I was attending the funeral of Edmund Gustian, co-owner of Giggles Night Club, who had passed away, and was a very good friend. I'll be back next week to adjourn, ask to adjourn the council, his memory too. He had a long battle with cancer, and finally, the good Lord took him. So I'll talk about him next week.
Thank you. I just have a few, not to be remiss. I forgot to, actually, I didn't see my other brother, Armin, in the audience, and his son, my nephew, Vartus, came all the way from the fine city of La Cañada to be with us here in Glendale. Pay attention to the fine streets and the great police and fire service, and everything else that we have here in Glendale. The, as I said on the MetroLink board, MetroLink was considering extensive service cuts to many of its lines, in particular, the Ventura County line and the Antelope Valley line, both lines of which pass adjacent to the Bob Hope Airport through Glendale and then to Union Station after, actually, we're still continuing, but we have passed a motion to eliminate any cuts to the Antelope Valley line. And only the most, only the least used lines from Ventura County will be cut. I think there's only going to be about four from Ventura County, saving certain members of our legal team the many-hour commute, which would, he, which, shouldn't say he, which that person would otherwise have to take should that MetroLink line be canceled. So we did hear from the representatives of the Bob Hope Airport, both Mr. Quintero, Mr. Weaver, as well as their executive director, that the MetroLink lines are vital to Bob Hope Airport in keeping people off the highways and bringing them to our fine regional facility. And I think those comments were heard and paid attention to by the MetroLink staff.
Mayor, before we move on, the director of the Bob Hope Airport rides that train too.
Well, he does. He seems very concerned about proposed cuts. Well, that's...
Legal team and the director.
That's good. I appreciate, in fact, the whole MetroLink board appreciates the advocacy of both you gentlemen and, and your executive director, Mr. Fager, as well. Let's move on. Mr. Kozakian.
If I can add something, Mr. Mayor and council. Just a reminder that on April 10th in Adams Square, there will be a chess tournament put on by the Adams Square Merchants Association and the AAA, or All American Association Chess Club. And this festival will begin, I believe, at 10:00 AM. Welcome you all to come and register and play against some of our youngest and best chess players. And don't let their ages fool you. I've played against them and been humbled before. So please, if you want to come and play a friendly game against some of our neighborhood kids in chess, do so this Saturday, April 10th. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from staff or my colleagues? Mr. Drayman.
I'm sorry, Mayor Najarian, I forgot to, I didn't turn the page over and since, other note for Mr. Zern. Mr. Zern, some time ago, we were talking about the sidewalk situation on North and Grandview, where the road begins to become narrower and narrower and narrower, and we start to run out of sidewalk up there. And we have a lot of questions from some of the residents up there about what we might be able to do. You remember, we raised this issue before. And I just wanted to make sure that that was still somewhere on our radar as to bringing some information back.
Absolutely. It's a little bit difficult for us because we can't take a straight shot with the cemetery owning or the right of way. So we've developed a preliminary plan that allows us to get from one place to the other. There may be some street crossing involved, but we're actually just putting a cost to that right now and looking at where our resources are.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, let's move on to the next item, please.
Mr. Mayor and council, the next item is consent items, including minutes. Following a routine that may be acted upon, one motion of a member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed. One card was submitted to pull 5D.
I do have the card to pull 5D. Are there any other requests to pull any items? If not, I'll take a motion.
Will the consent calendar at 5, with the exception of D?
Thank you. If there's no comment on that, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. And let's read 5D, please.
5D is Director of Public Works regarding banner requests from the Glendale Sunrise Rotary for use of city poles and lie standards. That D1 is a motion to implement council direction.
Thank you. Mr. Rob Fogel, would you like to address this item? I don't think we need a full report. I think we're very familiar with the...
I know you are. Actually, we have a, last year, our, we have a short video from last year's honorary chair, Fritz Coleman, that we'd like to start by showing you.
Okay.
Yeah, one second.
Cue it up.
Fritz to talk about that. Fritz?
Yes, ma'am. And you know, a couple times a year, especially the first time we have these triple-digit temperatures, we have to remind ourselves that it is never good to leave a child in a car with the windows up, not even for a minute. And it is a wonderful program with that title, "Not Even For a Minute," created by the Glendale Sunrise Rotary Organization, wonderful philanthropic group. Last year, they started a banner program where that line, "Not Even For a Minute," with other information about the program, is on a banner, and you can have your company name or your family name or whatever name you choose for a period of 30 days that would hang on a banner with that piece of information along Brand Boulevard in Glendale, one of the heavily traveled roads, not only in Glendale but in the Southland. And there are various levels of sponsorship. It was tremendously successful last year for their kickoff here. We'd love to get you involved. Just a little friendly reminder, every day, especially during warm weather, that not even for a minute is it appropriate to leave a child in the car. Tragic stories several times a year on the newscast. Go to nbcLA.com, type in banner program in the search box, we'll get you right to. The Glendale Sunrise Rotary website is glindalsunriserotary.org for more information. We salute them. It's a wonderful, wonderful idea. Unfortunately, we do have to be reminded about this particular program. Very quickly, we'll look at the continuation of the heat... Very quickly, we'll look at the continuation of the heat.
Why is it going to be that hot tomorrow?
Yeah, well, we'd like to be that hot, wouldn't we? Well, some of us would.
Thank you, Mr. Robfogle.
And so just, I've passed, had passed out to all of you, applications. If any of you want to sponsor a banner, we'd welcome that. And also decals for your cars. These are static cling decals. Even if you don't have children of that age, please put them on your car to remind people. I've got extras along with some banners for our flyers for offices that I'm going to leave by the table. Anyone in the audience that wants to take them can have them. Thank you for, all of you, again, for your support. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Quintero, thank you for your support and everything you did for the city last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions on this? I'll take a motion?
Move 5D.
Second.
Let's take roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Aye.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Thank you. Now, let's go to the next item.
Next item is oral communications.
And I would like to continue with the policy set by Mayor Quintero. And we're taking cards from the public for items, public announcements and public service items. I have two cards, Leon Mayer first and then Colin Bogart. For three minutes, yes, three minutes each.
Thank you, Mayor Najarian, members of the council staff. My name is Leon Mayer. I'm here on behalf of the library and particularly the friends at the Glendale Public Library. And I'd like to announce to you again, April 18th, Sunday, 3 o'clock, we're having a fantastic symposium by Dr. Hovnessian, UCLA professor, and he's bringing scholars from Denmark and Germany and Ireland to talk about different perspectives concerning the 95th anniversary of the Armenian genocide. That should be a very deep, meaningful program. We urge everybody to consider coming to that program. Now, tomorrow night, all of you have heard some of this before, but if somebody in the audience hasn't, I want to invite people who have not made a commitment yet to come to see Tom Hayden tomorrow night at the library, 7 o'clock, to talk about his book, "The Long Sixties," from 1960 to Barack Obama. Now, Mr. Hayden has been known for not just being an author, but he's been a anti-war activist, he's been a peace activist, he's been involved with civil rights movement. He went to the South and got arrested and beaten up trying to register black voters. He's been around for many, many years, and he's been a prominent state legislator in the state of California for the last 18 years, up to about 2000. He was a assemblyman and a state senator. He authored 100 important, over 100 important pieces of legislation that have helped a lot of people do the right thing in this state. So that is tomorrow night. And I brought this book with me because it's going to be offered for sale. He'll sign it and lecture about it. He's going to charge us either $15 or $20, the normal price is much greater than that. And don't bring your credit cards, bring cash. Bring cash so we can sell a lot of books. The library gets a percentage of that, and it should be a very interesting program. And we like to believe he follows the same picture of the nationally-known authors, nationally-famous authors, that we've tried to bring to the library. And for example, if I have another second or two, on the 10th of May, we're bringing to you Father Gregory Boyle, famous priest who's written a book called Tattoos on the Heart: The Power of Boundless Compassion. And he's been famous for founding the Homeboys, and he is also known for all the work he's done in, in regard to gang intervention. So we'll, we'll talk about that more. Back to see you tomorrow night. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Colin Bogart?
Mayor Najarian, council members, city staff, good evening. My name is Colin Bogart. I work here for the LA County Bicycle Coalition, the Safe and Healthy Streets Project in partnership with the city of Glendale. And I'm here this evening to invite council staff and city residents to plant a tree this coming Saturday, April 10th, before you go to the chess match. As you may recall, as part of the Safe and Healthy Streets Project, we have what's called a physical project where we strive to do, to make improvements to a particular street corridor to make it more bicycle and pedestrian-friendly. And as part of this endeavor, we're going to be planting trees on Maple Street in South Glendale this Saturday, April 10th, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, 820 East Maple Street. We encourage the community and anybody interested to come and join us for this tree planting. This is really just the first part of a larger planting. We're actually ultimately, thanks to the efforts of the Public Works Department, particularly the Maintenance Services Division, who I'd like to thank for coordinating this and pulling it together for us very, on very short notice. They've really pulled through for us on this. We're ultimately going to be planting about 89 trees along the entire corridor that we're calling the Riverdale Maple Bicycle Pedestrian Corridor as part of this project. The idea being that, that the shade that trees will provide will be beneficial, not only to the people who live on this corridor, but for bicyclists and pedestrians who potentially use the corridor. If you've ever ridden a bike in the middle of the summer, you know what I'm talking about. So once again, this Saturday, April 10th, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, Maple Park, 820 East Maple Street, we invite all of you and the public to attend. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We look forward to all that becoming a reality. I don't have any other cards. Have any other cards been submitted but not turned in? Mr. Kusakian?
For an event?
We have a later, we have a later session of oral communications, which is a little longer on any subject that you'd like to, so perhaps that's... No problem. Very good. Let's move on to the next item.
At 7 under adoption of ordinances, at 7A is ordinance approving the Milford Wind Corridor Phase II Project Power Sales Agreement. 7A, this ordinance was offered on March 30th, 2010, by Councilmember Weaver.
This was the agreement for GWP to purchase clean, sustainable wind energy at a reasonable cost. Is there any discussion on that? It was introduced? Is there a motion, Mr. Weaver?
I'll move 7A.
Okay. There's no other discussion? I don't have any cards? Let's take roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Thank you. That item passes. The next item, please.
At 7B is an ordinance amending sections 5.32.010 through 5.32.030 and adding sections 5.32.040 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to the city's allowing professional boxing matches on an ongoing basis at the Glendale Civic Auditorium. This was offered on March 30th, 2010, by Councilmember Friedman.
Thank you. And this currently, as this ordinance was introduced, it was without any sunset period. This was a complete lifting of the, is that correct, Mr. Howard?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the ordinance before you is essentially an ordinance on an ongoing basis. We did, we took out the term on a permanent basis because the council could certainly choose to repeal it if, if you deem appropriate. So it is essentially an ongoing or open, it's no longer a one-year trial period or two-year trial period. It is an open provision for professional boxing at the civic. I should point out some changes that occurred since last Tuesday. One is the, the definition now that's been added to section 5.32.010, and that's mixed martial arts, which we use that term to be somewhat all-encompassing or all-inclusive. And it's defined fairly completely on page two of the, both the strikeout version and the clean copy. Likewise, you'll, you'll find on page five of the ordinance, 5.32.030, the exception for both boxing matches and for mixed martial arts that are part of an educational program, in other words, sponsored by a college or educational program, that is, mixed martial arts is included within the exception so that a school could put on, under their auspices, one of these programs. And then lastly, under 5.32.020G, mixed martial arts event is specifically prohibited, again, consistent, we believe, with council's direction last Tuesday.
Thank you. We do have a card. Herbert Milano? Herbert Milano, three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Potem Najarian and members of, I'm assuming you're Mayor Potem. I want to, my name is Herbert Milano.
Not Potem. You came in late, Mr. Milano.
I came in late? Okay, thus...
We reorganized the...
Reorganized already?
Sweet.
Excellent. You're mayor now for the next year?
I know, it makes you happy, but... He actually has been mayor the last whole term. Who's your eye doctor?
I haven't even noticed, yes.
Start the, start the three minutes, Mr. Kusakian.
Mr. Najarian, members of the city council, I know that for, for quite a few years, the civic auditorium has, has not had sufficient revenues. And given the city's financial predicament, I know that you're probably looking at the potential revenues that you might derive, or the city might derive from, from this type of activity. But I believe that the city deserves to get an opinion from neurologists who can come before you and basically give you a whole other side of this particular sport. I know that there are other issues that I brought in the past, but I think that as you try to make this decision or make it appear that it's going to be permanent, that we get the point of view of others who basically are dealing with issues about health and brain damage, neurological damage that occurs. The, boxing is a, is a very popular sport. I watched it myself. But I'm also cognizant of the kind of, you know, image and the kind of message we want to, you know, portray to our, to our residents and our young people. But also, it is a, a major issue, especially if, you know, if you happen to have the type of situation that occurred in Vegas where the insurance of a particular boxer was insufficient to cover the medical costs that the state had to incur, you know, over half a million dollars in order to be able to resolve the problem with, of this particular boxer. So we get the other issues, detached retinas, you know, severe trauma to the brain. And I think that it behooves the, this city council to consider, you know, especially having Glendale Adventist Medical Center promoting stroke health. But we get another point of view to see if this is really the wise thing to do and the wise thing to promote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards on this. Are there any comments from council?
I mean, we talked about it at length last week, so I don't really want to repeat what I said then, but all boxers take exams, including by-license practitioners, including medical MRIs, et cetera. If you start losing, you can't fight. They look to see that the matches are evenly balanced. In other words, someone with a 40 and one record doesn't fight someone who's lost four, 10, eight fights in a row. So anyway, it's sanctioned, it's licensed, and it's controlled. It's not just a, a street fight. But anyway, we've talked about all the different issues last week, so...
Any other discussion?
Move 7B.
I'll second it. My only point is I was leading towards a, a one-year extension. However, as long as my colleagues understand that if there appears to be even a hint of any problems, that I would bring this up for discussion after such problems materialize. And then I would, I would support the ordinance as written. Motion and a second, let's take roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
No.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. That item passes. Let's move on, please, to the next item.
Next item under hearings is 9A City Attorney regarding ordinance regulating the placement of commercial wireless facilities in the city. 9A1 is a resolution certifying and adopting a negative declaration. And 9A2 is an ordinance for introduction amending titles 12 and 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code. And 9A3 is an ordinance for introduction amending the downtown specific plan, the town center specific plan, and the South Brand Boulevard specific plan.
Okay, thank you. And to whom are we going to pass this to? Mr. Starbert?
Christina Sansone? Good evening. Congratulations, Mayor Najarian. Good evening, council. We're here tonight to review, I'm going to give you some highlights of the ordinance that's before you. It is 132 pages, so I will try to make it brief, give you highlights. In the audience are our consultants, Jonathan Kramer, who is from, with Kramer Law, he's an attorney, as well as our telecommunications technical consultant, and Jeffrey Melching from the law firm of Rutan and Tucker, who's been indispensable in assisting us.
May?
Thank you. So the two ordinances that you have tonight are product of the council's direction and community input. We've had substantial community input in this endeavor. And we're exploring new regulatory options for better managing the growing number of applications, particularly in residential areas, for wireless telecommunications facilities in the city. We have two maps here in chambers, one behind you and another at the entrance to the room here to show you the locations of existing wireless sites, to the extent that we, the information that we've had. So I do invite members of the community and council to look at that map if you'd like as, as I continue with the presentation. Currently, we have a temporary moratorium. It was enacted last year to allow the staff to study and consider the development of these ordinances. The moratorium temporarily halted the issuance of permits of wireless antennas in residential zones and in the public rights of way within 1,000 feet of residential zones. That moratorium remains in effect today, and it is due to expire on June 15th. While developing the ordinances, we sought comments from community and industry stakeholders. We held three different community meetings in various areas of the city. We posted announcements in the city's website, issued press releases, we published announcements that culminated in the hearing in front of the Planning Commission on February 3rd. And at that time, the commission recommended the ordinances be provided to the council. Now, the intent of the ordinances, and I'm going to speak as, as if it's one ordinance, basically, they are a product of one, one ordinance. They will prescribe clear, reasonable, and predictable criteria for assessing wireless antenna applications. They establish two new permits, one for the public rights of way and one for zone properties. They establish incentives for encouraging antennas away from residential zones. They require aesthetic standards such as camouflaging and screening to protect the visual character of the community. They satisfy local telecommunications needs for the deployment of enhanced wireless services throughout the community. And they establish a master plan for the reasonable access to the public right-of-way and to private property in a competitively neutral and reasonably non-discriminatory basis, consistent with state and federal law. And with regard to the state and federal law, they place significant constraints on the city's ability to control the location and installation of wireless facilities. Just briefly, city regulations cannot prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the ability of a wireless carrier to provide telecommunications services. The city regulations must be competitively neutral and cannot unreasonably discriminate among providers. The city must take action on wireless facilities, applications within a reasonable period of time. The city cannot regulate wireless facilities on the basis of the health effects of radio frequency emissions, although we certainly may verify compliance with federal emissions rules. And the city may control the placement of wireless antennas in the public right-of-way, but only to the extent of imposing reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. And according to the court's, aesthetics is part of the reasonable... of the reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions that we can require. So within the legal context, a number of substantial changes have been made to both the right-of-way and the zone properties in the municipal code. First is more sophisticated application requirements. We're requiring accurate mapping of the proposed site, an engineering certification demonstrating that the FCC regulations are, standards are going to be met, complied with, an analysis of alternative sites away from residential zones and sensitive areas, visual impact analysis with accurate photo simulations, requiring a projection of the carrier's future needs within the city, as part of the master planning I mentioned, an analysis of any gaps in service that the proposed antenna is intended to cover. We require, in the application process, a demonstration that the proposed facility has been designed to the minimum feasible height and diameter. We require also a maintenance and monitoring program, and a demonstration of good faith efforts, that the facility be located, to the greatest extent possible, co-located on another facility, and that the carrier that's asking for this new facility is making that facility available for co-location by other carriers. In the general provisions, we have specified preferred zones, and that, to the greatest extent feasible, the wireless facilities should be concentrated in commercial and industrial areas. If the antenna can't be located in a preferred zone, the carrier will be required to demonstrate that there is a significant gap in coverage for the service, which can't be closed by any alternative or location or configuration, and that the facility will be sited to the least intrusive means possible. The ordinance favors fully camouflaged facilities compatible with the surrounding area. And in that, the carrier will need to show how the proposed antenna will cover gap of service in significant areas. And that significant gap would be not just an inconvenient or a small gap, but has to truly be significant. We'll have criteria for determining whether a significant gap exists. That criteria will have to be site-specific, and it will include propagation maps. We're going to ask for what effect that significant gap has on commuters and our significant highways, whether it affects roaming capabilities of the services that they wish to provide, what number of potential users are going to be affected by the lack of service, whether the proposed facility will improve a weak area or fill an entire void, and what effect the gap has on users for safety reasons, such as to reach 911 services. And we're also asking for the manner in which the carrier proposes to close the gap, and that it be the least intrusive means possible. There will also be an alternative site analysis, which requires that the carriers provide a good faith effort to locate the antennas in the least intrusive means possible, and also away from residential zones. We anticipate that there may be a back-and-forth process during this application period with each individual permittee, because it is on a case-by-case basis. For undergrounding facilities to the greatest extent possible, that would be for accessory facilities wherever possible, there will be notice to the public, both for public rights of way and for zone properties. With regard to radio frequency compliance, although the city is preempted from regulating wireless facilities based on those safety effects of radio frequency emissions, the city is not restricted from verifying or requiring the verification that the facilities that are being installed are in compliance with FCC standards. And Mr. Kramer can respond to questions you have, with specific questions you have about radio frequency emissions. Mr. Kramer, by the way, is the co-author of Local Government Guide to RF Safety, and that is attached to the Planning Commission report, which is in your agenda packet. Outside expert reviews may be necessary in some cases, particularly in the site selection and propagation analysis, where there is a significant gap analysis. And the city would have the right to obtain outside experts when needed, and that the cost of the expert's fee would be borne by the applicant. With regard to the public right-of-way, the community has voiced significant concerns about the placement of wireless facilities in the public right-of-way in residential zones. The proposed ordinance provides greater protections for residents within the bounds of applicable law. Formerly, the review process was very limited, and the determination was that the encroachment into the public right-of-way of wireless antennas would not be detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare. At that time, there was no official process for incentivizing wireless antennas away from residential zones. There was no community notice, and there were no official requirements that the carriers show a need for the placement of the facilities to cover a significant gap. But the new ordinance is going to substantially strengthen the city's ability to regulate in the public right-of-way. There will be an aesthetic review, which the Public Works Department has never needed to do in encroachments before. There will be community notification. There will be preferences for low-visibility antennas away from residential zones. There will be setback requirements, and there's a new definition in the ordinance that tells us what setbacks will be from property line out into the street. And to the extent possible, the antennas will need to be the same number of feet as the underlying zoning setbacks require. There are exceptions to that, having to do with significant gap coverage, alternative sites, and also if the antennas are co-located on existing facilities. There will be a deadline to commence construction, which is new, sixty days from the date of the issuance of the permit. There will be requirements at the time of completion to show an as-built plan of the antennas, so that we are sure that the application for the antenna has been met. There will be appeals from the decision of the Director of Public Works to the Building and Fire Board of Appeals. This is a new appeal process. Any aggrieved party, as well as the applicant, can appeal a decision of the Director of Public Works in this regard. There will be, there is an option I wanted to present to you, and it is, we gave you that on, just before the hearing here. This is for public hearings in the public right-of-way. This would increase public involvement for residential areas. Since the Planning Commission hearing, we've heard many comments from the public with regard to asking for a public hearing-type process. So we have given you this draft language, and we're ready to discuss it, if the council so desires. That is optional. We ask that council consider it, and if you like, we can give you more information about public hearings, public right-of-way. Going on, in zone properties, we currently have a very strong zoning code, which requires that the antennas be, go through a permitted use analysis. If it is in an area that's not in an open space zone or in a residential zone, a conditional use permit is not required. But if it is in those sensitive areas, a conditional use permit is required. But with the new ordinance, we have a new way of determining where antennas should go and what review authority will be making decisions on the permits. And that is, classifications will be divided into, excuse me, the permit, applications will be divided into antenna classifications. Could we put up slide two? We have just a few slides. Want to bring to your attention, oh, this isn't the ordinance, this isn't the, this might be the other one. This might be the Planning Commission.
Chris, while waiting to get that slide, you might want to point out, and then correct me if I'm wrong, the language in the addendum is, I believe was provided also to stakeholders, relevant stakeholders, both members of the community and industry stakeholders as well, so they have a copy of that?
Yes. With regard to public hearings for the right-of-way, that language that you have before you has been placed on the web, and it's been sent to community stakeholders as well as industry stakeholders. So this has been given out to all people that we know are concerned about this issue. Okay, let's go to slide two. Yeah, I think it's a little further. We're going to go over to the classifications. And just as a.
Is there, do you have a lot?
No.
More? Okay.
No, we don't. And what I'm going to do is ask Jonathan Kramer to address you on the different classifications. He will show you pictures, which I think is going to be important, for what those classifications are. We'll quickly go through them.
Quickly is a.
Quickly.
Is an opportune word. There's.
And Jonathan?
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. Jonathan Kramer, Kramer Telecom Law Firm. We'd just like to show you one picture per class to give you a flavor of what we're talking about. So just one moment here as we advance to the right slide. Class one antennas are basically antennas that are well camouflaged on existing structures, buildings, examples here of a church and a shopping center. Let's go to the next slide, Class two antennas are antennas that are added on to an existing cell site. So the theory here is that in class two, we would follow whatever was there before, so it wouldn't substantially change the existing look. Next class, class three? Class three are for temporary sites. They're called cells on wheels or cows. And they're brought in for temporary events or to replace a cell site that's being repaired. So we have a special class for that. Class four, utilities, this is an example of a, some cell sites at a high school, where the antennas are mounted on the light standards around the track. Class five, basically flagpoles or cylindrical structures like this would fall into class five. And class six would be mounted on a structure that's only partially hidden. There's been some effect. In this case, that's the effect here for the camouflaging purposes, to painting to try and match the underlying building. Class seven is for a new structure solely built to be a cell site. And this is one that, this is a ornamental clock tower in a shopping center, but it's actually built specifically to be a cell site.
Before you, and in your packet is the matrix, which is for zone properties, to determine when classification are heard by the Planning Commission, and when classifications are heard by the Planning Director. PC means Planning Commission. PD is for Planning Director. Class two, co-located, would be the same as the original base structure. That is the proposed decision-making process for the zone properties. Finally, the effective date of the ordinance will be sixty days out from the adoption, if you choose to introduce it tonight. By four-fifths vote, the adoption would take place next week, and there would be sixty days before the ordinance is effective. This would be to coincide with the fee resolutions that we would be bringing to the council next week. And the moratorium would be lifted at the time the ordinance goes into effect. On the agenda tonight, there is also a resolution of certifying a negative declaration. That would be presented next week. And finally, a little housekeeping. We found some grammatical errors in the ordinance, not too many, about four. And there's some punctuation, so we'll be cleaning that up, if you happen to see it. We'll clean it up for next week, should the ordinance be introduced tonight. That concludes my report. Jeffrey Melching, Jonathan Kramer, and I would be happy to take questions now, or if you choose to hear from the public, we'll be available to answer any questions you like.
Thank you. I have about, oh, about eight or so cards from the public. Would you like to ask questions now?
I had a question first.
Mr. Weaver?
Just curious, on the class three mobile, as you can move around, I don't know, I think all of us got a letter from a lady who blames us for not having, during the flooding, the rains, the floods up there, that we didn't have enough wireless communication up there. They couldn't get out. Fortunately, blamed us, but she lives in Lockenhead of Flint Ridge. It's not our city. But is this the kind of thing, if the city had a mobile, one that in a disaster, they could move that piece of equipment in that would help people be able to make calls out?
That specific class is for the cows that are owned by the wireless industry. And that's one of the purposes, is in an emergency, to bring them in. So we have a very easy process to get them in very quickly. But the city would not normally be the ones who provide the cow in a particular area.
I just wondered, when, emergency operations center, we open it up and we're going, how could we correlate with wireless industry or whatever to put a mobile out there if it's needed?
Mr. Starbert?
Actually, we would do that through our EOC. We do have contacts with AT&amp;T and Verizon. In fact, after the fires and storms, they reconfirmed their willingness to bring in temporary facilities if we should lose them. So we maintain those contracts through the EOC.
Just basing it on the letter we got that said they couldn't get out.
Mr. Quintero?
I have a question. One of the points in the optional language, public hearings for public right-of-way, the applicant is made a showing that a significant coverage gap would exist if the facility were prohibited in the proposed location. Does the city of Glendale have the capability to judge whether it is a significant coverage gap or not? Who's going to make that determination?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Quintero, there will be a two-tiered process for making that determination. We have internal staff in the IS department that is capable of reading propagation maps and determining radio frequency standards and coverage gaps. If we do need it, though, the option would be for either Director of Public Works or the Planning Director to call in an outside expert. So that'll be within the discretion of the disreviewing authority. But we do have internal staff who can make the first cut on that. In fact, Mr. Honig is here tonight, answer some questions for you, if you like.
And the, would be paid, but I didn't have to ask.
At the expense of, yes, of course.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we go to the public, and then we'll open it back up to council. Elise Kalfayan, followed by Sia Parker, and then Judy Kendall.
Twenty minutes.
I'm going to give three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian and members of the city council and staff and audience. My name is Elise Kalfayan, and I'm here representing Glendale Organized Against Cell Towers, which was formed after residents discovered a cell site about to be installed in front of a neighbor's home. In bringing our concerns here, we really appreciate that city council members have been committed to finding the best solution possible to this complicated issue. And we've also found city staff members to be highly professional and forward-looking in their approach. The result presented tonight, after a lot of discussion and a great deal of work, is a thoughtful and carefully-prepared ordinance that we are pleased to support, particularly with the option and the addendum proposed by staff. Mayor Najarian, you referred to challenges that the city has faced over the past year, and I was reviewing this whole process of several months in coming up with this ordinance. The city council enacted a moratorium. City staff have mapped and documented the condition of wireless sites throughout the city. Staff also reported on the FCC's National Broadband Plan Initiative and recommended comments for the city council to send along to the FCC. The city tracked a couple of significant high court cases that were resolved during this period. And the city council voted to join a coalition expressing concern when the FCC placed time limits on processing of wireless permits. And I want to thank you for that. Thanks for all of this, and special thanks and acknowledgement to Christina Sansone, who so ably coordinated this whole effort. There have been many developments in this policy area, and it's been hard to keep up, and she's kept up with everything and has really presented this very well. The ordinance that's resulted from this whole process provides sensible guidelines for wireless installations. The challenge will be in its implementation, and we're pleased that public notice requirements and public hearing options for public right-of-way will provide opportunities for city staff and members of the public and industry to discuss wireless facility deployments. So let me just conclude by saying that Glendale's been a leader in a very positive way in this area, and an example to many other communities. And I hope the ordinance will serve as a starting point for other cities that are dealing with this issue. Thank you very much.
So you support the. So you support the proposed additional language?
Yes, I do. Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. Sia Parker? I hope I'm pronouncing that right. Followed by Judy Kendall, and then Theodore Polikronis.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Sia Parker. I'm representing T-Mobile. I'm the Planning and Compliance Manager for LA North. On behalf of T-Mobile, we'd like to thank Christina Sansone, the City Attorney's Office, and the municipal consultants for the work that they did on the wireless telecom facility ordinance. Throughout this process, T-Mobile has submitted written comments and concerns in regard to the ordinance and the criteria that has been presented. Tonight, should the ordinance and addendum be adopted, T-Mobile will work with the City of Glendale to bring wireless services and infrastructure to the people of Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Judy Kendall, followed by Theodore Polikronis, and Leslie Daigle.
Mayor Najarian, city council, my name is Judy Kendall. I'm the CEO of the Glendale Chamber of Commerce. I support this ordinance as it's currently drafted. We've spent an extraordinary amount of time debating and deliberating. We need better cell service in Glendale, and it's time to resolve this. Our businesses need better wireless service. They need cell phones, iPhones, BlackBerries, laptops, netbooks. But more importantly, they need these devices to work right here in Glendale. It makes no sense to stand in the way of connectivity. That's basically what's gone on for too long here. And more than ever, individuals and businesses are depending on wireless connectivity. The community, city staff, and the wireless industry has worked diligently to create a very workable solution. So I encourage you to pass this ordinance, and let's get our businesses connected. And our businesses really need to stay connected now more than ever. Thank you.
And Judy, you're speaking on behalf of the Glendale Chamber of Commerce officially. Thank you. Theodore Polikronis, Leslie, I'm mispronouncing it, Dale Daigle, Daigle, and Margaret Hammond. Margaret Hammond.
My name is Theodore Polikronis, and I want to thank the city council and the staff for working on this thing so diligently and everything. So I have a very brief statement to make here on this ordinance. I've been unable to read the final draft as proposed tonight. I just only wish to state that it must not be adopted unless it incorporates provisions for public hearings and proposed antenna installations everywhere within the residential areas, in the proximity of homes, including on public rights of way, and unless it includes provisions for denial of permits based on public nuisance or potential public nuisance. We do not wish to see a repetition of the debacle of Cumberland Street, where it was attempted to bootleg such installations and installation of such equipment a few feet away from our homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Leslie Daigle, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian. Congratulations, and members of the council. My name is Leslie Daigle. I represent Verizon Wireless. And recognizing it's the rotation, you want to keep things light. The issues that Verizon has are hardly hot-button citizen issues. It's actually in bonds and insurance. And our concerns really get to the core of business practices. And our insurance, we're self-insured, and we would appreciate that the ordinance recognized that as a legitimate viable way to do business. And secondly, as far as bonds go, we can do bonds, but we don't want to do cash deposits. Now, the staff mentioned back and forth, and that unfortunately can kind of define city government, state government today, and that is, a lot of really what happens ultimately is in the administration, the interpretation, the application. When you have an ordinance of over 130 pages, you potentially have many points of contention. And there's a couple of issues that we don't want to go back and forth on, and that's bonds and insurance. And we believe at the outset, as policymakers, you can clarify that, in fact, our self-insurance status would be acceptable and is an appropriate business practice. And secondly, that we would not have to post cash deposits. Then the final issue is, the noticing is at the discretion of the city engineer. And typically, when we have public noticing, we have an established radius, whether it's 300 feet or 500 foot. So we would like to know upfront, you know, what the rules of the game are going to be, and not have kind of an open-ended discretion by the public works director. And again, that would be, I think, a standard practice that's out there. So I appreciate your consideration, and I thank you.
Thank you very much. Margaret Hammond, followed by Jamie Hall.
Good evening, Your Honorable Mayor. Congratulations, I think, city council, members of the staff and audience. My name, as I say, is Margaret Hammond. I've been around for 50 years, seen many changes in the city. Some of them good, and some of them not so good. Not happy about all those boxes that are popping up all over the place. But one of the things I do wish, that the city could put restrictions on the use of cell phones by morons who indiscriminately walk off the sidewalk with a phone plastered to their ear without looking out for the auto traffic, let alone the criminals who talk and text while driving. How many unnecessary deaths have been caused, and humongous agony heaped on families of the victims? Over and over, we see it as we drive around town, people with the phones still stuck in their ear. But here we are, and here we are with a bicycle group advocating trees in the right-of-way to beautify the city. Well, will it hide all those boxes and vaults or whatever that are all over the right-of-way in the city, particularly down in South Glendale, and that have sprouted up all over the city? Now, I do think that we do owe a vote of thanks to Elise Calfayan for all the work she has done the past year. And if she had not, and with her group stood up and kept saying what they felt should be, our city would truly probably be overrun with these boxes and aerials and cables or whatever you call them. And I do advocate, at this point, I know we have to have cells, I guess. I never turn mine on, except in an emergency. I think I got along for 81 years without it, so I don't think I need it at this point in my life. But I do think an ordinance should be passed, probably, to limit, but only with the idea of public input and the ability for people to speak up when they don't feel it's in their best interest, particularly for the quality of life for the citizens of Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie Hall, followed by Rich Roach, and Raymond Kwan.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Hall. I'm here on behalf of the California Wireless Association. It's a volunteer organization, nonprofit, composed of various members of the wireless industry. We see this ordinance as actually fairly restrictive, and I think staff would probably agree with us. I was here a year ago when this council directed staff to develop the most restrictive ordinance possible under federal law, and you have before you today a really restrictive ordinance. So really, what I want to focus on here is the policy implications of regulation, because regulation doesn't come without consequences. And there are real-world impacts for the residents of Glendale, regardless of whether they're in this room or not, tonight. Americans are increasingly discontinuing their landline services, and I'm not just saying that, there's actual data to back that up. They're opting instead to rely exclusively on wireless phones. According to the Center for Disease Control's national health survey conducted last year, more than one in every five American homes, or 22.7%, have only wireless telephones. And this number just continues to grow. Moreover, new wireless devices are allowing consumers a new way to access broadband, and that's wirelessly. And there's a host of new consumer electronic devices that are being deployed that allow us to do things we might have never imagined. Think of the Kindle by Amazon, or the iPad, which was just released three days ago. And I raise these things because it's an indication that, for those devices to work, we need to have a wireless network that works everywhere. And, and we need to be able to provide seamless services to all areas of Glendale, including residential areas, which is really the big issue here. To meet capacity demands, carriers need to have facilities closer to where people actually use those devices. And I know that that's a hot-button issue, and very difficult to deal with, but that's the catch-22 situation that's created by this ordinance. It says, it's very restrictive. If you want to go in or near residential zones, we're going to have the highest burden possible. But we need to be able to provide service in those locations. So that's the catch-22 situation. And I just ask you tonight, beyond the legal stuff, to consider that policy issue. You're adopting an ordinance that's extremely restrictive, and there are consequences for overregulation. And it's going to be difficult to provide services in or near residential zones. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rich Roach, followed by Raymond Kwan.
Good evening. My name is Rich Roach. I'm with AT&amp;T. And it's been 15 months since you passed a moratorium on the wireless industry's ability to build necessary infrastructure for our customers, your residents. On an average of 250 an hour, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, during these 15 months that have passed, well over 2 million Californians have become wireless customers or added another phone. During these 15 months, the traffic on our wireless data network has more than quadrupled because people are using their phones in new and different ways, very bandwidth-intensive. Across the country during these same 15 months, an estimated 10 and 1/2 million people have given up their landline, their service, their wireline coming into their house, and traded in for a cellphone. That's a lot of people. There's a lot riding on these cellphones, on wireless devices that people have. The simple fact is that these wireless devices need to ride on some sort of network, a network that for the past 15 months has been continuously strained to keep pace with demand. It's becoming difficult for us to provide cell service to your residents as the city's infrastructure continues to fall behind during this 15 months. With the adoption of this ordinance, the most strenuous ordinance that I've ever seen, it will continue to be difficult to deliver service, and it'll cost us more to deliver the service. But at least there's a path forward, sort of a green light to move ahead, and that's better than a moratorium. As I said before, we're willing to be flexible. We strive to accommodate neighborhoods and community needs, and we hope the flexibility goes both ways. We need flexibility ourselves as we seek an ordinance to enable the best placement of wireless facilities, with sensitivity to residents' input, and with the least amount of impact to communities. Let me end this with a simple reminder. The need for wireless infrastructure is not going away. The demand is immense for wireless service and applications, and we find ourselves racing as fast as we can to accommodate our customers and the residents of Glendale. We have to invest to keep up with demand. The ordinance makes it difficult for us to do that. And I fear there comes a point when companies such as mine won't be able to comply with these ordinance because of time, money, and complexity to do so. When that happens, investment will simply will flow into other areas and to other communities that are more conducive and welcoming. If this ordinance passes as is, we'll do whatever we can to work with the city as we attempt to deploy wireless service in the city of Glendale. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Raymond Kwan.
My name's Raymond Kwan. I've been attending many city council meetings throughout the city, throughout Southern California. I want to compliment the city staff that this ordinance is the best I've ever seen. It's far better than in my own hometown of Pasadena, who enacted moratoria and ordinances, and this one's much better. I do want to point out, I've been to all three of the community meetings that the staff had. My question about the ordinance as written is the inclusion of monopoles. We're all familiar with the giant monopoles off the freeways, and these are the 500-pound gorillas that nobody wants in their neighborhood. I do not see them classified. And because the matrix of how the city deals with antennas, where is the monopole? If there's a monopole application, I don't see where it fits in the matrix, and how does the city deal with it? I brought this up at the very first community meeting. There was a response by the second community meeting, but I'm a little surprised that I don't see it at this meeting. So I wanted to point that out, that you may not have seen it, Mr. Mayor, but that was a problem that I saw with the ordinance, missing the monopole classification, the big ugly ones, not the ones that are nicely hidden inside other structures, but the big ugly ones that's off the freeway. Now that I imagine you're going to pass this ordinance, I want to point out that the responsibility now shifts from the community to the staff. The coverage maps submitted by carriers are often, I've seen this many times, they're often erroneous, incomplete, obsolete, and sometimes seemingly to, to the cities deliberately so. For example, the cities, the carriers, coverage maps, the one they advertise that they're very good in your neighborhood, they will often contradict their own propagation map that they submit to the city, saying they have a significant gap. You'll see green all over the place when they say "buy our service" on the web, and yet they'll say "we have huge red holes," and they're inconsistent with themselves. So the responsibility for making sure that you don't just take their word for it, if there's a continuance, you need to make sure that the new maps are submitted, not the old ones, because continuance may take quite a while, and I've seen many times where the old maps are still submitted, and there are new ones with new towers that they put up they don't tell the city about. So the responsibility now shifts to the city. I just wanted to point that out, and I thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much. I don't have any other cards on this item. Are there any at your desk, Mr. Kusakian? Okay, let's, let me go back to the colleague, to my colleagues, to the council for comments or questions. Ms. Friedman.
I have a few questions for staff. First, in no particular order, monopoles. Does our ordinance address them, ignore them, what happens with them, what class are they, et cetera?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Commissioner, excuse me, council member Friedman, the ordinance definitely addresses monopoles. And the zone properties are considered class four. They're treated as such if they're in SR zones or residential zones. They would be going to a public hearing for the planning commission. They are also mentioned in page 14 of the ordinance on public rights of way. There are specific camouflage requirements, as well as size and scope requirements. So I, yes, they are addressed there.
Okay, thank you. I believe it was the representative from Verizon who talked about self-insurance and cash bonds?
Yes, Ms. Daigle has brought that to our attention, that that's a concern of Verizon. First of all, in public rights of way, encroachment permits do require insurance. There is a specific provision for self-insured entities such as Verizon, a big telephone company. They would have the ability, if they do have self-insurance, to come in, show proof of self-insurance, and that would be acceptable. As far as cash deposits, on occasion, the public works department requires cash deposits before an applicant perma-te can go into the right-of-way and cut the street. There are other ways of providing security in the event that the work doesn't get completed. They could be by surety bonds, or other, a letter credit, or some other type of protection. But it's a security deposit so that we have assurance that if the work isn't completed, there's enough money there to complete the job.
So it sounds like there's some flexibility.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I have comments, whenever you're ready, no more questions.
I have a question for the Sansoni on that same issue, bonds and so forth. Quite a few companies use subs. How are we going to handle their, their subs? That's what the original problem was about. It wasn't the actual T-Mobile, I believe, but one of their subs started the work.
With the sub, if they apply, if they are the applicant, they're going to need to, and if they're going to be doing the work, there's usually a contractor that works for the company. Then on contract, there will be, and still a need for insurance, still a need for some kind of security, especially in large jobs. But those are usually handled by surety bonds, letters of credit, alike. Cash bonds, maybe Mr. Zern can address the frequency for which cash bonds are required, usually for smaller projects, I would assume.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Council, we allow the cash bond because a lot of our encroachment work is just the resident that's in front of it. And they don't have access to a bond. It's usually small amounts of work. They put up some cash to cover the work that they do. But on these larger projects, the contractors, like in any of our construction projects, put up a surety, and most of them have access to that, and brokers that provide those for them. them.
Questions? There was one other item that was raised regarding the vaults, and in what way are the vaults that we see ancillary equipment to the poles affected by this ordinance?
This ordinance deals, of course, with wireless antennas. There are still vaults in the public right-of-way, in parkways, that deal with hardwired services such as cable or telephone services. But with respect to wireless, we have provisions that incentivize the underground installation of vaults to the greatest extent possible. There are sometimes technical reasons why a vault can't be placed fully flush to grade, and actually, Mr. Kramer can address those if you want to get into more detail. But there are noise, you know, they will have to comply with the noise ordinance, and there'll be other ways in which we can help control.
Okay, so this is only equipment that's directly related to the wireless?
In this ordinance.
Apparatus, in this ordinance, correct. If there's no other questions, I'll open, Mr. Zern?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, just one, there was the representative from Verizon questioned the public notification process about the right-of-way areas. In Ms. Ansoni's report, page 5, it's clearly spelled out there. If you look under that, new requirements for wireless facilities in the public right-of-way, it states timing, 30 days before any decision's made. It captures radius, 500 feet, and also requires a 3-by-4 sign be put at the location where the tower's going to go. So it seems pretty clear to me on that notification process.
Okay, maybe an oversight on their part. Okay, if there's no other questions, comments on this, now we're here to, the business before us are two ordinances for introduction, and then a resolution certifying and adopting the negative deck, just to frame the issues. And I will close the public hearing at this point. No comments and positions, Mr. Quintero?
Strange going first, I always get to go last. Well, let me start by thanking the neighborhood group, and especially Mr. McMahon, Mr. and Mrs. Polykronis, Ms. Calfeyan, and all of the other people that worked so hard and were so technically proficient in pointing out other cities, San Diego and the city, I believe, in New Jersey, that had actually enacted laws, had been involved in lawsuits and so forth. It really raised the awareness, and like I say, they did so in a very professional manner. And then I'm also happy to see the major providers, Verizon, T-Mobile, and especially AT&amp;T, that's always had a major employment presence in the city. I'm glad to see them here tonight. I know they've worked with the staff, and it's an ordinance that they can live with. And then I'm a little taken aback by the nonprofit, who wasn't quite so happy. I just want to point out the nonprofit is representing private-for-profit corporations. But anyway, the mainline, major providers are, seem to be okay with the ordinance. So, Margaret, I'm disappointed. I was planning on buying you an iPad and having you, but no, I guess I'll, I guess I'll pad. They're so easy, Margie, deal with it, just touch, not even a mouse. But anyway, I think, yeah, there is no question that we are going to be dealing with these issues, meaning cities and municipalities and general counties are going to be dealing with this issue for years and years to come. I mean, it is just overwhelming, this wireless revolution, wireless tsunami, whatever it is that you want to call it. And it's interesting because the, a Washington Appeals Court overruled a trial court, ruled against the FCC and for Comcast, and it had to do with the other war going on, whether you are a provider like AT&amp;T, Comcast, et cetera, or you're a content provider. So there's a whole other war going on that cities aren't or are marginally involved with. But our specific issue has to do with communications and towers, and to me, the sanctity of neighborhoods, I think that is number one. That is number one. And so I believe with this ordinance, we've taken a positive approach. I think it's something that everyone will live with. I'm sure we'll have lots of technicalities to deal with, that the staff will certainly do whatever it can to, one, work with the neighbors, and work with the providers, because it's absolutely important that we take a balanced approach. So I'm planning on supporting the ordinance.
Thank you. Ms. Friedman?
Thank you. I agree, I'm very happy to see this ordinance come forward and to be such a comprehensive and rigorous ordinance. You know, it's an evolving industry, so of course, local ordinances are going to evolve to keep up with that industry. And this didn't come out of the blue, it didn't just fall out of the sky. This ordinance and this whole process came about because basically, one particular company acted less than respectfully to a neighborhood. And because of that, as a city, we really, it's our responsibility to step in and make sure that that doesn't happen again. And that's the intent of this ordinance. I believe that it was carefully and fairly created to really balance these issues and to balance the needs of the different parties. It should not create service gaps. It was intended to not do that, but to also make sure that neighborhoods have some measure of control and some say about what happens in their neighborhood. So I think it's very balanced. I don't believe that it's going to make these different providers not want to do business in Glendale. In fact, I think what's going to happen is that other cities are going to look at our ordinance and start adopting our ordinance, and that sooner rather than later, this is going to be much more than norm. So they're going to have to go to a different country, I think, in a couple of years if they really want something that's a lot less restrictive. So I believe the ordinance is legal, I think it's responsible, I think it's very respectful to the industry and very responsive to the needs of the residents, puts a lot of power into their hands and into the hands of the city that should belong there. And I support the additional language that was offered as well, both of the items that are on this page. So as we go forward, I would urge my colleagues to also recommend that particular language. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I also want to just echo the thanks to Elise Calfeyan and to the rest of the Go Act group. They've done really an incredible job, and it's a very scientific and intense sort of research that they did, and they all could probably go out and get a job now, looking for one side or the other. But thank you all, you've done a real service to Glendale.
And you were part of that group before you donned your robes to sit up here with us?
I wasn't, I think I still am, actually, in some ways. I certainly get a lot of emails from other cities and other residents in other cities asking for help. So if that says anything to the representatives who are here from the wireless industry, know that this is not just Glendale, we're not some crazy loons, this is going on all over the country.
Thank you. Mr. Drayman?
Well, let's make it three in a row. I plan to support this ordinance. I'll start on that end and work backwards. As my colleague, Ms. Friedman, mentioned, this began because John McMahon picked up his phone and called a council member. And this issue found its way to our city council, our city council chambers, and the Glendale City Council responded to that. I'm pleased with the ordinance, and I want to thank staff, I want to thank Chris Ansoni for the excellent, excellent report. Complicated, yes. Takes some time to sort through, yes, but an excellent, excellent report. So I want to thank you, and I thank the rest of staff that worked so hard on this. We're the third-largest city in LA County. I doubt seriously that because of this ordinance, that the wireless industry is going to bypass us. I don't see that happening. But I also want to caution the public and my colleagues in that I don't think we can pat ourselves on the back and say, this is the end, period. I think we need to see how this plays out, how it works out in practicality, as opposed to just on paper. And vigilance is going to be important for us. So I want to make sure that Go Act and their brethren, not just in Northwest, but throughout the city, keep an eye on how this plays out, and we'll see from there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Drayman. Mr. Weaver?
Well, I've heard this is a tough ordinance, and I'm very happy it is a tough ordinance. It's what the public has asked for, and that's what we've tried to deliver. We owe all that to staff and our consultants, making sure it's a tough legal ordinance. And if it is not working, we're going to hear, the public will be down here telling us they can't get service or whatever. And any ordinances, we all know, can be revised, and it'll be played with if it has to here and there to make it work. The city is unique from a lot of other cities, there's a lot of hills and dales around, so getting wire service in is a little harder than it might be on some of the flat land cities that are south of us. But it's necessary to do this. I know I bought my first cellphone in 1991, and there was virtually nobody I could call, because, you know, they hardly even existed. That time, it cost over $1,000. I think I still have it, I'll try to bring it next week if I still have it. But the reason I got it, my daughter was going to college and practicing basketball at night, she had to walk to her car in a garage in the dark at night alone. I got her that phone, I says, if anybody's following you, whatever, you dial 911 immediately, somebody be there. That's the only security I could give her. That's why I spent $1,000 in 1991. Now they give them away. But this is only the beginning. Like we said, it's in its infancy, we're going to have side lights doing it all, and all these structures are going to be built, all going to be torn down in time. I don't know where the technology is on that yet, but it's an evolution, it will occur. So everybody in the world will be able to directly hook up to a cell tower in the sky, and we won't have this, we'll be able to get rid of the ordinance. It's the future. Right now, I'm for it totally.
Thank you, and I'll be brief in my remarks. I would like to congratulate Go Act, Mr. McMahon, the Calfeyans, the Polykronises, everyone that came forward so many months ago, and to our legal staff, Chris, and our consultants, thank you very much. I think it's a very good ordinance. We are limited as to how far we can go, though, because of the case law and the rulings, but I think we asked you to take it up to the limit, up to the edge, the precipice. We don't want to go past because then we're challenged, and it's overturned and all that. But I think this is a good ordinance, and I think it's good for the carriers, too, because what it gives them is certainty. Here are the rules, well, it's much thicker than that, but here are the rules to operate and construct and maintain your equipment in Glendale, and if you play by these rules, these are the rules that, rules of the game. Public input, all the restrictions, financial, aesthetic, well, let me not get into it too deeply, but I don't want to mistake the myriad of dos and don'ts on this, but it's all before them, and I think, I think private industry asks for that. The Chamber of Commerce is in support of it, the major carriers were here in support of this. And hopefully, this moratorium will be forgotten, and that we'll be able to move forward with these rules, protecting the neighborhoods, the residents, but also the private businesses. So I'm in favor of this when it comes time for a vote. Mr. Weaver?
Do you want a motion? On night, that's what I was going to do, sir. I was going to move 9A1.
It's our mitigated?
Second.
Negative deck, second. Let's take roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Right.
Mayor Nigerian?
Yes.
Mayor, I'd be glad to introduce the ordinance as amended at 9A2. It's giving all the public hearing.
And just so the record is clear, that amendment is the optional language that has been provided to you.
Right. Paragraph K of subsection, et cetera, et cetera.
Et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, thank you, that's introduced.
And I'll introduce the ordinance at 9A3.
Thank you. That ordinance is introduced as well. Thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate your efforts.
And just so the public understands it, the matter will be back next week for a final vote and adoption.
Okay, let's move on, Mr. Kasakian.
Mr. Mayor, we can go forth with new business, or we can return to oral communications, whichever you would like.
Let's go to oral communications.
Okay. Discussion is limited, not part of this agenda, speaker is allowed five minutes. Counsel may question or respond to a speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision, and the city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Thank you. I have several speaker cards. Claudia Murphy, followed by Dr. Clyde Williams, and Robert Mofcesian. Come forward if you hear your name. Hi?
Good evening. My name is Claudia Murphy. Thank you for allowing me to be here, council members and mayor. I would really like to start by praising the Glendale Police Task Force for working on a serious problem in our city in regards to the pedestrian fatalities. I really appreciate that our law enforcement is willing to think out of the box and be creative in its attempts to tackle this problem. However, I disagree with the methodology of a decoy program. I just don't think it's a positive way to handle this problem. The model was developed by retired Officer Goy, I don't know if I'm pronouncing it properly, and although it's undoubtedly well-intentioned, in my opinion, it's problematic for several reasons, and I'd like to highlight some of those reasons. In looking up decoy in the dictionary, what really stood out to me is that it's described as "to lead into danger by artifice, to lure into a net or snare, to entrap, to allure, to entice, someone or something used to draw attention away from another, a person, a device, or event meant as a distraction, to conceal what an individual or a group might be looking for. Use of a decoy distracts and conceals the real issue, and thus does not educate or alert drivers about stopping for pedestrians in marked or unmarked crosswalks. If the police department wants to educate the public about this pedestrian right-of-way or elucidate a pedestrian fatality problem, then they should deal with the problem directly, without distractions or attempts to convolute the problem within an Easter bunny or other costumed character. Using a decoy to teach lessons or illustrate points does not allow the crux of the problem to be the center of the focus. Ultimately, the issue becomes about the decoy, not the problem itself, as it did in last week's bunny sting. If you want to point out that we have a serious problem with pedestrian fatalities, then using a real-world scenario of a civilian-dressed officer attempting to do what the other pedestrians who were killed when using Glendale crosswalks did is much more appropriate. But more importantly, using a cartoon character makes a mockery or a joke out of what is a real and deadly problem in our city. And it just seems like, though their intentions were good, it just that the police department thought that it was using a funny bunny was an appropriate symbol for alerting the public to a real pedestrian danger. I am grateful that we have a police department that is proactive about public safety, and I also recognize their good intentions on this issue. And I'm also equally appreciative to council members for letting us discuss this issue or bring it up, or for those that shared their concerns and/or the concerns that we expressed as residents. And surely, in this world of imperfection, not every decision made by our police department or any other entity, for that matter, is always the best choice. And I would just like to reflect that I just didn't think this was the best choice of our resources. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Clyde Williams?
He left.
Dr. Williams has left. No doubt to talk about the 710 tunnel and his opposition to that project. Robert Mofcesian, followed by Charles Hooker.
Looks like Mr. Mofcesian has stepped out, although his belongings are still.
Charles Hooker? Okay. Roberta Medford?
Somebody's dead.
Speaking with Elizabeth Queen?
I'm Roberta Medford, I live in I live in Montrose. My daughter, Elizabeth Queen. Congratulations, Mayor Najarian, and my thanks to the entire city council for all your dedicated service for the people of Glendale.
Recently, 36 Glendale residents wrote you, asking that you add the city of Glendale to the almost 4,000 cities worldwide whose mayors are proud to be known as Mayors for Peace. The signers of the letter are:
Carl Alvesian, David Baumann, Terry Bayer, Lori Collins, Joyce Day, Michael Deal, Andrew Dungarelle, Fiona Dungarelle, Gloria Dungarelle, Karen Holden-Firkich, Henry Flegel, Kevin George, Mike Gomez, Eddie Gorrell, Susan I. Henry, Thomas Henry, Richard Johnson, Nancy Burnett Kent, Eudora Lowe, Lisa Lubo, Mo Mansour, Roberta Medford, Jim Nacella, Florence M. Paris, Elizabeth Queen, John Queen, Richard Sealy, Dawn Setzer, Michiko Shinmoto, Julianne Spillman, John Steele, Jasmine Tarjavan, Sheridan McMillan Thayer, Irina Varjabedian, Bill Wiseman, and Sharon Wiseman.
Here's a little background info on Mayors for Peace. It was founded in 1982 by the mayors of Nagasaki and Hiroshima, Japan. Hiroshima is the sister city of Glendale. Mayors for Peace works to remind the world of the inhumanity of the atomic bomb, of which those cities know all too well. Their goal is the total elimination of nuclear weapons. This goal is officially supported by the United States Conference of Mayors, the organization of the mayors of the large cities of the United States such as Glendale. You can go on the web to www.mayorsforpeace, one word, dot org for more details.
Our timing here tonight is intentional. Russia and the U.S. have agreed recently to reduce their nuclear arms by one-third. Next week, on April 12th, leaders of 48 nations will meet with President Obama. He's invited them to Washington to talk about working toward a nuclear weapon-free world. Your old college dorm mate, I understand.
No, not a dorm mate. Oh, no, no.
You might get to the White House after all.
We weren't that close.
Later this spring, a world conference on eliminating nuclear weapons will convene at the United Nations in New York City.
Hundreds of former heads of state, foreign ministers, national security advisers, and military commanders are part of this movement because they think that a nuclear weapon-free world is both possible and necessary. Necessary because with nuclear weapons now possessed by countries less stable than the traditional powers, chances have increased of them falling into criminal terrorist hands. Now is the time, and we are the ones we have been waiting for, to end the scourge of these horrible weapons.
Of course, municipal government's primary concern is local, and we all care about our own quality of life here in Glendale. Yet I did hear our city clerk invoke a prayer to be cognizant of all humanity in our work here. I'd like to just say that we hear figures ranging from $10 to $55 million deficit potentially faced by our Glendale Unified School District. All the deficits of all the school districts in the entire country are a drop in the bucket compared to what we spend on our nuclear arsenal. We've talked here tonight about unsightly structures and trying to eliminate them in our neighborhood, control them. Ooh, boy. One small nuclear device, one accident, one criminal act, it's really going to bring down our property values.
Please heed the calls from your sister and brother mayors throughout the world. Joining Mayors for Peace would be a sign of great respect for our sister city, Hiroshima, Japan. It would give them the turned sister-city real meaning. No legal obligations would be created for the city of Glendale. We have come here tonight to demonstrate our support for you in this brave personal act. Mayor Najarian, will you be a member for peace?
I will. I'll answer when it comes time for the comments. Thank you for your presentation. Robert Mofsesian?
Hello, I'm sorry.
Are you ready?
Yes, I am.
I can go to Margaret Hammond.
Okay.
Let me go to Margaret Hammond. Are you ready, Margaret?
She's always ready.
And then we'll go to you, Mr. Mofsesian, and then Herbert Milano.
Good evening again, Your Honor, Mayor, and members of council, staff, and members of the audience. My name is Margaret Hammond. As you may know, I am a great, great advocate for recycling of everything. Have been for many years. Before, it was the popular thing to do. I would go out at 12 o'clock at night, 1 o'clock, and gather the newspapers from my neighbors and take them up to Gar, that's up on San Fernando Road. And the clients there, you know, they flatten them out, roll them up, and sell them to various companies for moving and so forth. I did that for many years. I'd say 20, 25 years. As a matter of fact, I was chased a few times by the police. And then my next thing is bottles and cans. You know, a lot of people don't pay any attention. They just throw them into the regular trash and so forth. I belong to a group who saved them. The president is a real, she's something else, Martha, and doesn't even live in Gondal. She lives over in Eagle Rock. But she's the president for the Women's Athletic Club. And we all gather up, and the little old ladies toddle in with their little bags of bottles and cans, and she takes them and gets them recycled. And we, I think I mentioned this, $1,000 last year for our scholarship. And again, this year, we're well on our way. We're almost to $800, and we hope to get the $1,000. Clothing and household items. People toss them in the trash all the time. And there are many organizations, goodwill and so forth. I happen to belong to the Assistance League. And we, from the donations that our citizens here in Glendale bring to us, have made enough money that we have clothed the children in Glendale at our public schools that didn't have money for uniforms. We give books, $1,000, to the various schools where we go with the authors and illustrators. We have a senior luncheon. We do all kinds of things with that money that we get from recycling the items that are brought to us. We volunteer in the shop, and that shop is on Harvard at Louise, almost at Louise. So what I'm saying is recycling is not just throwing it in your trash can. Sometimes it's more than that. It's taking the time and passing it on. If it's reusable and whatever, it really does help in other ways. Now, one of my beefs, you know, has always been a bulky item, which hangs around on the streets sometimes, and I've made comments, and I keep telling people to call. Well, I myself call, and as a matter of fact, I called this morning because I had banana tree stumps that the young man had cut them into three- or four-foot lengths and bound them up and put them in my driveway, thinking that they would be picked up. And they were not. And when I called to ask for them, why, or how to do it, as a matter of fact, I talked to the man, Tom, who is the head of that department, and he told me, yeah, that they would take them. They said, hmm, okay. What's your name, address? Okay, let me look at your account. Okay, we'll come pick them up, but we're going to charge you for it. I went like, no, you're not. I mean, hello, I heard that was for free, and I already pay you enough for trash, and I'm not going to be charged for picking up those stumps or whatever you call them from the banana trees. Forget it. And about three weeks ago, I had sort of the same experience in that my trash was dumped in front of my apartments, furniture and something, whatever, as I say, people do that, it seems. And I was really upset because I was wanting to show my apartments. So I called and said, "Would you please come and pick up all that junk that's left on the front of my apartments?" And they said, "Hmm, okay. Who are you?" And I told them who I was. Yeah, you're the owner. "Okay, we'll be happy to come pick it up, but we're going to charge you." I said, "No, you're not. It's not my trash. I didn't put it there." And that's it. So whatever happened, because in my opinion, I already feel that I pay for a bin and I pay for whatever. I don't put trash out like that, and I refuse to pay for somebody else's doing it. But I am still in favor of the bulky item. And 548-3916 will get your bulky item picked up. Instead of all those couches laying around on the street corners and so forth, all you've got to do is pick up the phone, and they will come and pick it up. Mr. Starbird told me they picked it up for free, so therefore, that's what I keep telling everybody. And I hope it will help to improve our quality of life in our city by not having all this trash laying around. Especially after a rain, it gets pretty nasty. Thank you very much. And the other thing is on the poster awards that I went to last week. I understand that the students in government, the government students, that they were asked if they had been involved in that poster contest when they were in school. And 14 of the 16 students said yes, they were, and that was where they had learned a lot about recycling and anti-graffiti and so forth. So those poster awards that are sponsored by the city in Glendale Clean and Beautiful are well worth the effort in training our young people to be good citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Mr. Mofsesian, followed by Mr. Milano. Mr. Milano, if you're ready. All right.
Mayor Najarian, congratulations, by the way, on your selection. Members of the city council and city staff, my name is Herbert Milano. This afternoon during the redevelopment agency, Councilmember Weaver proposed yet again that the city consider a business tax. A few years ago, Councilman Weaver had also proposed this additional text based on the justification that other cities do. And in his words, because I get it edged in my mind, his expression was, "They are getting away with murder." I'll never forget that particular phrase. This topic came up because the director of the redevelopment agency claimed that he needed to report on business demographics. If he needed to report on them, that the city needs a business tax as a way to collect the information. Now, there are four reasons, insilient reasons, why this proposal should be thrown in the garbage. Reason number one, anyone with a marketing and business marketing experience knows that you can buy business data by standard industry classification, by the size of the business, number of employees, and even the name of the executives by area for a very cheap price, 10 to 20 cents a name. Number two, the redevelopment agency has just reviewed proposals to encourage businesses to come to Glendale. How this plan can encourage businesses to come to Glendale proposing a particular tax is beyond me. I mean, it's hard enough to try to keep the current businesses if you increase the business tax. Reason number three, Glendale businesses pay the highest electricity rates in California. I have the data to support it. This is already a hidden tax on businesses, just as it is on families. Reason four, we expect the city council to be fiscally prudent and truly responsible to the public. Here's Glendale's history of expense trends that have doubled the city's budget in the last 11 years. Since 1999, while the Consumer Price Index has increased by 35%, the city has done as follows. It increases employees' benefit fund by 398%. It increased the employee dental plan by 335%. It increased the employee medical insurance by 532%. It increased the fire department general fund budget by 225%. And I can go on. The paramedic fund went from zero cost to the city to $12 million in this fiscal year. What I'm saying, what I'd say is this, that instead of trying to figure out how to increase electricity rates, how to increase city fees, or how to consider new taxes, that you seriously consider this year, especially this year, how to control the city's burgeoning expenses that seem practically uncontrolled. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mofsesian, are you ready?
I hope so. Mr. Najarian, members of staff, I congratulate you, and I'm sure you'll be a great, great mayor, and I'm very proud of you.
And we're very happy that you have come before us. We're happy that you were here last week and this week. And the only thing I want to say is, I know you get excited sometimes and like to shout out during some of the meetings.
I'll try not to do that.
Keep that down, and we try to avoid personal comments on the council people, so.
Okay.
If you're going to say how great I am, you don't have to say that.
But you are great.
No, no, I don't want you to say that. But we're here to listen to your concerns and hopefully learn from you.
Mrs. Friedman, the continuation of my talk with you March 30th, 2010, talking about not allowing people to smoke outside of coffee shops, which I disagreed with you. And I said it is unfair and biased, and explained there are places like our own Starbucks in Europe, they are much more aware of, they are much more ahead about the climate change and the pollution. They're much more ahead of us. And they allow people to sit outside and smoke, and when they are inside, it's divided into, there are smokers and for not smokers. But I don't agree what they do in Europe. We shouldn't copy everything they do in Europe, like legalizing prostitution, or like in Amsterdam, legalizing drugs, heroin, hardcore drugs. And I'm against gambling. I was unfortunately very addicted to gambling during my life, and it truly ruined my life because it's one of the worst addictions, I think. It's worse than drugs and alcohol, I think. I'm sorry, it's my opinion. I think it's murder and inhuman to allow this kind of stuff. Mrs. Friedman, I compare you intellectually to my very, very favorite host, Rachel Maddow. My grand-grandfather, who believed in Moses, named his son Mofses, which is Moses, like Mr. Najarian. Najarian means, Najar, which is, means carpenter or woodworker. And that's an art. It is an art. There are names like Apujabayan. Jabbar means tyrant, and he's a tyrant of, he was hired by Galeria. He was the head of signature gathering. He hired young students. He said that Galeria put a budget of $400,000. When he says, I don't believe a word, because when he says $400,000, it means $100,000 because he doesn't have no credit, by me. For the purpose, for the purpose, those young students were paid half or one-third or nothing. He was, he said he was fighting for his, I mean, sorry, he was not fighting for the people, he was fighting for his own pocket. I have to, I have proof, this is his own handwriting, if I may read it. Good cause, when your allies ask you to invest more than your volunteer time subsidize you financially, you should embrace it if your time allows. I would love to see my good fight subsidized so that I do more for the cause. His cause is his own pocket, as I told you. I told the same thing to Yusef Young. Do you have time?
I think you're almost up.
Oh.
You've got a little bit of time left.
What's that? It's time. Half a minute?
But if you're done, you don't have to, I mean.
I have lots of things to say, but half a minute is not enough for me, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mofsesian. Thank you very much for your comments. I enjoyed your comments on the smoking issue.
Yes.
And the laws in Glendale.
That's right.
Just to be honest with you, I think you're an honest person. When we started getting into attacking some other people, Mr. Jabayan and all that, we sort of lost focus. But I do want to hear your comments on how the city's being run and our ordinances and what's going on in your neighborhood. So think about that for next week. Thank you. Your time is up.
I was getting, okay, next.
We can talk later. Thank you, and we're happy to see you here. That concludes oral communications. Are there any responses? I know we have some new business as well. Mr. Weaver?
Yes, since my name was brought up. You know, if...
Yes, since my name was brought up. You know, if Mr. Milano was right in anything he says, one percent of the time, it would be a miracle, the numbers he throws out on electricity, whatever, even on things that I supposedly said. This afternoon, I mentioned kiddingly about a business tax to find out different work groups in the area. Was kidding. My gosh, right away, he gets up there and says tonight that I actually want to put a business license tax on. And I talked about it, I'd say, it was a ten, this is my fourteenth year, maybe fourteen years ago, I bought the Cosmont Report, which analyzes all the taxations in every city in Southern California. And there was less than five in all Southern California that didn't have a business license tax. And if you looked at the rate structure, you found out that taxation to businesses and residents in this city are lower than virtually any city in Southern California as a whole. And if that's true, businesses here, like markets and so on, you get charged less in Glendale than you do in Burbank and Pasadena that do have a business license tax? No. But I didn't ask for it to be put on the agenda. I discussed my findings and said, that's one way. I didn't ask for it to be put on agenda, but Mr. Milano stands here and says, I want a business license tax. Can't get his facts right, ever. And just so the public at home knows, as soon as he spoke, as he always does, he left and went home. He didn't want to stay here to hear me respond to him. He'll write in his rag that he writes in, it'll be in next week about what I supposedly said that I didn't say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Any other comments? Mrs. Friedman?
Yes. Just to Ms. Murphy there who came to speak about the bunny. As you can imagine, there's been a lot of bunny talk around here in the last few days, and there'll continue to be. So that's all kind of in process and under discussion. But I think that your points are very well taken, and I appreciate your coming here and laying them out, and doing so respectfully as well. So thank you.
As for myself, Ms. Medford and Ms. Queen, I will be happy to get to the website and read that. And if it's everything that you say it is, I will sign on. Is it only limited to mayors, or can council people also join?
A lot of them have dates.
Okay. Okay, well, that's right. We'll check into that. And Mr. Weaver?
There's four of us sitting here.
I, I do recall your comments today, and I do believe that your intent was, as you mentioned.
A joke.
And I don't have, I guess if there's no other comments, we do have some new business?
Yes, two of us. Mine, I'd like to move the city attorney. BN is hereby authorized to institute legal action against property owners and tenants at a specific location to compel compliance with the municipal code of the city of Glendale. City attorney is authorized to incur all necessary expenses in connection with the presentation of the legal action. The name of the case and defendants will be disclosed once said action is formally commenced unless to do so would jeopardize services or the service of process.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Freeman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
And I would like to move that the city attorney, BN, is hereby authorized to seek appellate review of the ruling by the trial court in the matter entitled Scholars Academic Foundation, Inc. versus City of Glendale, Ed Al, case number EC-052590. The city attorney is authorized to file all necessary briefs, writs, and motions, and incur all necessary expenses in connection with seeking appellate review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Freeman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. I think that concludes our new business. Is there a motion to, oh, we're going to adjourn, Mr. Weaver?
Adjourn in memory of John Lawton.
John Lawton. With a motion to adjourn and a second, we are adjourned.